Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February 8th, 2012 meeting, regular session of the school committee. Everyone's present tonight except for Mr. Vale, who should be along, and Mr. Hayes is unable to be with us. That's for the roll call. Our next item would be the approval of items by consensus. Mrs. Benton.
Good evening, everyone. There are four items in consent agenda. Approval of the minutes from January 25th, out-of-state field trip to Peru, out-of-state field trip to Boston for the DECA state competition, and warrants FS-14, FS-15, G-10, G-411, L-36, L-37, L-38, R-217, R-218, and payroll 2112. Before you vote on these agenda items, I would like you to recognize Mr. Sundberg and some of his students to come up and talk about the trip that they took this summer. They're requesting to do another one next summer, and I thought it would be great for the committee to hear a little bit about what happened.
That's one of the items here. Thank you.
And maybe he can introduce the students you have with you this evening.
I'm David Sundberg. We're here for a couple of reasons. One is to thank you guys for the opportunity that we had this last summer. With your guys' approval, we were able to take a three-week trip to Ecuador. It was three weeks in Ecuador, but it was a full year and a half leading up towards it. The kids did a lot of different things, did a lot of fundraising, a lot of the kids paid for the trip themselves, which was an awesome achievement and a cool thing, and it made it that much more special for them. We did a lot of neat things in Ecuador, and before I talk about the next trip that I'm proposing to take to Peru to give other kids here at Wilmington High School the opportunity, I wanted you guys to hear from the students themselves, what they did, and a little bit about their experience in Ecuador. So they're just going to walk you through, talk to you guys about what they did, and at the end we'll answer any questions or if you guys have anything like that. And also, I've emailed a website. We have about 2,000 pictures from our trip up online. It does have a link to.
I will get it to you.
Yeah, we forward it to you. So it's kind of hard to see some of the stuff visually, but where we've been and what we've seen. And I mean, it's worth, you don't have to go through all 2,000 pictures of it. But it is neat to see. So I'll encourage you guys to do that when we're done. But we're just going to, this is Tom Rosetti, Connor Burke, and Sarah Luz, three of the seven students that had the opportunity to go with us. So they're going to tell us a little bit about the trip, and then I'll take over and talk about the Peru trip briefly at the end.
Great. Hi, I'm Sarah Luz. Leading up to the trip, when we first decided that we were going, a lot of us wanted to pay for it on our own, and personally, I paid for the whole expense, like for mine, by working at my dad's restaurant and babysitting. And it was a little over $4,000 for each student, but it was well worth it. Like, covered insurance, the trip, chaperone expenses, like, and everything was included. And we did fundraisers as a group, and we did the fall market, which we all brought stuff to sell. And then we did a trivia night in the CAF, and both of those were, like, very helpful to go towards our proceeds to get to the trip. And then before the trip, we, well, I didn't go because I was hurt, but they can tell you a little about the training weekend that we went on in the fall.
Yeah, training weekend was just pretty much to prepare us for some of the things that we would need to be able to do while we were trekking, like, how to make our meals using, what do they call them?
Tranges.
Tranges, which is...
They cooked a lot for themselves. They set up all their tents, they did everything, and this was just a weekend, so that the first time they were doing it wasn't in Ecuador. That was really... Yeah, so it was here in the company, United States.
Good idea.
So, then we did the training weekend, and then...
And then the day before that we left, we had buildup day, and it started here at the high school, where we learned how to pitch our tents and set up the tranges again, just like a little refreshment board. And then we went over to the church down the street, and we went to fly out the next morning. And basically, that night, Amber, the woman from World Challenge that went with us, and so Mr. Sundberg, came to us, paid $1,000 and said, "This is your money for the month, and you have to budget it." And like, that's the money for all nine of us that went, and we had to make sure that it was spread, like, throughout the week, and we used it for what we needed, rather than, like, little stuff that we wanted on the side. And then, the next day, we started by carrying all our bags and walking to the train station in Wilmington from the church. And from the train station, we went over to Woburn, and from Woburn, we took a shot, like, the Logan Express to the airport. And then we flew out to Atlanta, had a little bit of a layover, and then flew down to Quito, where we spent the first few days, which is the capital of Ecuador. And we basically just got used to, like, the, like, surroundings and stuff, and, like, speaking Spanish and everything. And, like, a big part of that was, like, getting around, and, like, we did a lot of walking in Quito, but we also did, like, public transportation, which was kind of, because we don't have, like, buses and taxis in Wilmington, so, like, even just going into, like, a city setting was different for us. Like, never mind the Spanish, like, language barrier. So, we did a lot of traveling through Quito, and we saw the markets and the churches, and, like, the old town and the new town. And we met with some American agents named Alex, and they introduced us to our trek guide, Joaquin, and we sorted out some stuff that we needed to do for the rest of the three weeks. And then, from Quito, we headed over to Atavalo, where we, on the way, we passed the equator. We actually got to stop there and, like, take pictures. It was really neat to, like, be at that landmark, I guess. And then, in Atavalo, we stayed at a place called La Luna, which was so beautiful, and we camped outside the hostel, and we did three alchemization treks. One at Cascada de Pichuga, which is a waterfall. Another one at Foya Foya, which is like a small mountain. And the last was at Kotacachi, which was like an elevated lake. And then, we headed to our main trek in the Intag Valley, which was a four-day camping trek that we did throughout the entire valley, and, like, we stopped every night. And it was amazing. Like, we were literally sleeping in the clouds, like, it was incredible. And then, at the end of that trek, we climbed down the mountain, and we ended up in the hot springs area, and that was kind of like a nice little treat at the end. We got to stay at the hot springs for, like, a couple hours. And then, we headed to our big climb, which was in Bambora, which is a very large mountain. I personally didn't climb it, but the other five students did. With Amber, me, Mr. Sundberg, and Bee Vanda, had to stay back because Bee had altitude sickness, and I had ankle issues.
She had altitude sickness. She was just sad it wasn't the best idea for her to go up. Another thing this company did, we actually spoke with, it's called remote medical, so we talked to doctors in Washington DC that actually prescribed a medication for, that we carried with us, me and the other leader, that we carried with us. So she could take a pill, she was fine. We just had to go down and be out of altitude, and she was fine. So we just, she just didn't go back up the next day. But it's a cool, it's a really neat thing that this company did.
And like, there's, like, that's another thing about, like, World Challenge, with, like, that comes with, like, the price that we all paid at the beginning, is the insurance and everything, like, all the safety stuff that they put into place, which is, like, while we're on our trek, they have helicopters on call in case anything was to happen. We had medical mules, which I did have to, like, I rode one, and I think Bee rode one a time. But, like, there is never a moment where you felt unsafe, because Amber was certified in all first aid things, and Sundberg was there, and, like, you always felt safe, and it was, like, comforting to know that, like, you had all that security and insurance behind you. And they did, like, a really good job, like, we had all the supplies that we needed, and it was really nice.
Did you run out of money?
We didn't. We got to the end, they can tell you a little bit more about that, but we had to budget it.
It's a good part at the end, actually.
And we all had, like, different roles every day, and Jack Campbell was actually our accountant for the month, because he's very good at math. And he, he did, like, a really great job, like, helping us budget, and we each carried a certain amount of money, and at the end of the day, we would go through what we spent, and...
What did we do at the end with our extra money?
We bought Subway.
Guinea pig.
Oh, right. I'll let them talk about that.
We went out for a special meal because we came in under budget at the end. You guys will hear about that.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Okay, so, after we went on the main trek and the alchemization treks, we did our community project. And our community project was, we went to a school, like, a village school, and the bus ride there was really, really long, to the city that was close to it, and we stayed for the night at the city, and then we took another bus ride to the school. And once we got to the school, we met, like, the principal, who was a very nice woman and very helpful for us. And then we met all the children, who were very nice, and we got, well, I got attached to them personally, because it was my favorite part of the whole trip. But we first went around the school and looked what we needed to do, and we had to paint the bathrooms, paint the walls, fix the, you know, get them sports balls, get them nets. We had to clean up the playground. We did a bunch of stuff for the school. And we stayed there for about a week, and we, throughout the week, we were working and painting and fixing everything up, and we had to travel back and forth through the school and the city to get supplies. And then, one of the days during the week, we decided that we were going to have the children take us to a, through a hike through, like, the jungle, and they ended up taking us to the house in the jungle. And it was a very small house for a big family, but they were very nice about it and cooked us a meal for us. And it was a very good experience, it was very good meal, and it was just a very fun day in general.
It was an amazing, we, the language vary, we weren't sure what we were doing. They just said, "We want to take you on a hike." And we showed up, and it was one-bedroom house for, well, not even a house, it was like a tree fort, for five kids, a couple and their grandmother. And as we were sitting there, we realized that they were going to serve us a meal, and it was chicken, rice, yuca, yuca plant, and the kids were going out into the jungle bringing back fruit. It was, it was absolutely amazing. I, like, I was blown away. I stopped and pointed out to the kids, I was like, "You realize how special this is, these people that don't have anything?" And the kids took it upon themselves before we went to do, like, a little shoes and clothing drive and supplies drive, and we showed up with a huge bag of supplies for the community and the town. Something extra above and beyond that wasn't part of the trip that they wanted to do on their own. It was a really, really neat, and the kids had a little, go ahead, are you going to talk?
Yeah, I was going to. Sorry. Okay, so, after we, after the week was almost over, it was our last day there, and the kids made us all presents, and this was just one of the presents that they gave us.
Oh, wow.
They, I think a few of us got individual presents, and then there was a lot of, like, generic presents.
They, they made them crowns and necklaces and a bunch of different jewelry and stuff like that, that they all gave the kids as thank you. They had a big meal for us again. It was pretty cool to give a thanks. So, is it? Go ahead.
After, after the service project was probably my favorite part of the trip, was rest and relaxation. We, out of the service project, we were taken back to the city of Tena, is it Tena?
Tena.
Where we were taking whitewater rafting. I had never been whitewater rafting, but it was a great experience, it was really, really fun. And I got sunburned, even though it was cloudy out. I didn't know that could happen. I guess it can happen in Ecuador.
He was warned, oh, there was.
Then we, very cool guy named Carlos, who I actually ended up having a conversation with, even though he spoke Spanish, which was interesting. He took us into the jungle, and we actually bathed in the Amazon River, which is just cool to be able to say. And trek guide named Libio, he kind of, he took us into the jungle and kind of told, showed us how he can kind of manipulate the wildlife and the nature of the jungle. He showed us how, how they make poison darts, and he took, he could also take a leaf from one of the trees, and he could make a hat out of it, or he could make a, he could weave a basket out of it. He did that right, right before us, and it was really cool to see. And while we were in the jungle, we slept in cabanas, which was much different from the tents that we slept in on the main trek. It was kind of a nice change of pace, and we also had catered meals when we were in the jungle. Three delicious meals prepared for us on the table each day. It was really nice.
They enjoyed that part of it. By the end of the trip, they had had enough of splitting up all the duties. So, is that it?
Yeah.
So, as you can see, it was a really cool experience and a really neat thing. And one thing they didn't touch on was that when we landed in Quito, me and the other leader just stepped back. So, if you can imagine just throwing a group of seven students into a community, it was pretty neat. They, they had to figure out how to get from point A to point B, how to set up their budgeting and different things like that. We stepped in when it came to safety and different things along those lines. I mean, transportation-wise, if they were going, you know, going to hop on the bus that wasn't safe or whatever, we'd pull them off, but that didn't really happen. That was our only job. So, the kids took care of everything themselves and really owned their trip. They also chose what we were going to do. The company has a three-phase thing, so they have trekking, community service, and then rest and relaxation. And you can do all three of them, you can, like, have an influence on one, you can do one more than the other. They chose to do part of all three. The next trip that I'm proposing is only going to be two weeks, so it's going to be a little bit less money, a little bit of a less commitment, hopefully so that we can get those two reasons to get more people involved. And then what will happen is, once we get a group of kids that wants to go, they'll be able to pick out exactly which parts of it that they want to hit on, what they want to do more of. There's a bunch of sample itineraries, I printed out a couple more, that, one is, like, 10 days of all project, and then, like, a day at Machu Picchu and a day at Lake Titicaca, and you head home, which is cool. Some is, you know, four or five days trekking, five, six days community service, you know, day at Machu Picchu, day at Lake Titicaca, and you come home. So it'll really be up to the students, they'll decide it, they'll own the trip, that was the big thing. And it was actually a great learning experience for me. As teachers and just my personality, it was hard for me to step back at times. All of a sudden, you know, the first week, I'd be putting in, like, "Well, what about this for dinner?" And then, you know, the other leader would be like, you know, "Dave, step back, let the kids figure it out." And so it was a great experience for me to see, to watch these kids and see what they actually did out in the real world. So with that, I think it's, I think it was a worthwhile trip, I think the kids loved it. And I would like to give another set of students here the opportunity to go on a trip to South America, which is a lovely place with lovely people, very friendly, very safe. So I guess that's, that's part of the reason we're here, and the other part was to explain to you guys what we had already done.
Thank you. So they're here tonight to, Dave's here to get permission to start soliciting interest because it takes a while...
Yes.
...to do that. Once he has the interest, we'll come back again to you for, with the final details, but we'd love to, I want to acknowledge the work that he did do, because even though, once they got there, the students did all the work, there was a lot of pre-planning, and...
Thank you.
He was very, very committed to this, and I think it just, I mean, it's amazing to hear, here they are in another country, and what do we hear about something taking taxis and in public transportation? Because students here are not exposed to that.
Right.
I want to commend all the students. The photos are amazing, I will share with the school committee, but, I mean, what an adventure and a learning opportunity for all of you, and I'm sure you'll never forget it. So thank you all for coming.
Thank you for having us. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
Yeah.
Mrs. Bonis.
Do you present this to the schools so that, to get interest? Do you present it to all the students at the school?
Yeah, so, so the idea, yeah, thank you, that's a great question. So the idea will be, because, to give them time to raise money, in the way that we did it last time, we'll kick it off in the spring, and then we'll travel, not that summer, but the summer after, so it'll be the summer 2013. So the idea, the students that I'll pitch before is, if everything goes as well, I've talked to Mr. Tracy about it, they have an assembly where they're going to be introduced to the MCAS process, what they're going to be doing for the MCAS, and then, we're just kind of piggyback on the end, and we'll, we'll present it to the freshmen and sophomore classes and say, "Hey, this is what we're doing. World Challenge will come in and run it." And they'll show a little video of past trips, and these kids will come and explain what they've done. And they've already, all the kids have already told me, they came back and told all their friends and all the Facebook pictures and everything else, and they were all kind of jealous, because they were the guinea pigs. They were, you know, you're sitting there, and they were asking me questions, like, "Can you shower?" And I was like, "I don't know." "I don't know." I didn't know what it was going to be like, and they were all like, "All right, we're in." And it was awesome. So the next trip, I'll know, I'll be able to answer those questions, but we will present it to anybody in the freshman and sophomore class that wants to go. And I even offered it, if there's a junior this year that will want to go after their senior year, I, if it's somebody that I know and feel comfortable taking, I would have no problem with that either. So, but it's really, I mean, there were past graduates that actually came back and asked me, and I said, "No, it's for the students, it's a learning pro," I mean, it's for the kids here at Wilmington High School. So... Yes?
Are there any of the kids who went this year who want to try to go to Peru in the next one?
That's another question. A lot of them are seniors, so it'll be, yeah, 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 so...
I'm a senior this year, so I'll be graduating. I am, like, because of Ecuador, I, like, spiked my interest in, like, Spanish, and that's what I want to major in now. And it also spiked my interest in traveling, so I'm gonna, I'm going with two of the Spanish teachers to Costa Rica in April, like, through another program with Ugo Teach, which is a 10-day program. But I think this trip has definitely changed, like, a lot in my life, and it's something that will always influence it.
So they just need a verbal blessing from all of you to go forward with it.
Absolutely. Do we have consensus? Mr. Marquezey, go ahead.
I just have, I have a question. One thing I noticed, again, I think it was a great trip, and I think it's a great idea, but I noticed that on the, on the notice that you've given us, that it's a single-source vendor of World Challenge, I'm assuming they're probably, you're going with them because of the great experience you had, and I don't blame you for that. But are there other companies out there who do something like this? Because you said the price is going to be cheaper because it's short a trip, but...
Right.
I was just wondering what other vendors do, and...
There are, there are some other vendors that do certain trips. The way that, the way that World Challenge is unique is that they've been around for, like, 30 years, and they have, I don't know if you heard him talk, but they have in-country agents. So we met, like, three or four times throughout the trip with actual physical employees of theirs that were there in Peru. Everything that we had done before had been risk assessed, like, they said the, we went whitewater rafting, it was something that they had all done before, or something that the company had gone through and done. Like, there were zip lines there, but they had risk assessed them and decided, "Hey, you guys aren't allowed to do that." You know, there was, like, a horseback riding company that didn't make you wear helmets, but if you wanted to do it, like, you had to wear, you know what I mean? So they had done all those other things. What they do is a little bit unique in the fact that they mix service and adventure. There's a lot of service trips out there strictly, and there's a lot of adventure companies out there strictly. I have a couple of friends from college that are also teachers that do, like, the adventure trips, where they just go, the parents pay X number of dollars, and they stay in hotels and go here to here to here. I haven't seen anything that mimics exactly what they offer. I mean, if there's something out there, I just haven't, I haven't been aware of it.
Again, just, just for comparison.
No, I understand.
But again, experience, you know, is a thousand times better than someone offering a price, and you've already done it, so...
Right.
So that's fine. Okay.
Well said. Okay, I would say you have our blessing.
Awesome. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Feel free to contact me if there's any other questions, or if you have trouble seeing the pictures.
I'll send them the pictures on your email.
That'd be great. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Absolutely. Thanks for your time.
I know, we're taking, we just needed, we're not going to prove it until they get the number of kids.
Okay.
So you're going to do one, three, a motion for one, three, and four?
Okay. Okay, so, I'll accept a motion for the January 25th, 2012 regular session minutes of the school committee. Mr. Marquezey.
I move to approve the minutes of the January 25th regular session school committee meeting.
Do we have a second? Okay, Mr. Vale, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous, oh, one, two, three, four, five. Five in favor, and one abstain. Thank you. Our next motion would be down to number three. Overnight field trip in Boston, the DECA state competition. We have a motion to approve that. Yeah, Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve the DECA state competition.
Do we have a second?
Field trip.
Oh, sorry. Field trip. Yeah.
We have a second? This is Carol, thank you. All those in favor? Okay, unanimous, Linda. And then, a motion to approve warrants, the warrants as stated, exclusive of the payroll warrants. Dr. Quick.
Motion to approve the warrants as stated, exclusive of the payroll warrant.
Okay, and second, Mr. Marquezey, thank you. All those in favor? Unanimous. And the last one is a motion to approve the payroll warrant. Mr. Marquezey.
I move to approve the payroll warrant, warrant of February 1st, 2012.
Thank you. Second, Mr. Vale. Okay, all those in favor? One, two, three, five in favor, and abstain. One abstain, Linda. Thank you. This is taking us. Our next item of business is a student representative report, and we have Michaela with us tonight. Hi, Michaela.
Hi.
Thank you.
All right, so, so far, the winter sports are doing well this season, and the girls' basketball team is actually 14-3 this season, and they already qualified for the state tournament. The boys' hockey team has their senior night this Saturday, and they're doing a breast cancer awareness drive to raise money. The glow dance will be hosted by DECA this Saturday night at 7:00, and the spring fling will be held on March 2nd at 7:00 PM. Members from DECA who qualified for states are going to the state competition on March 8th, 9th, and 10th to compete in Boston. And the academic decathlon team performed well this Saturday at their competition in North Reading, and out of the 13 schools placed in the top 50 percent. The prom expo is going to be held on Wednesday, February 15th. The sad club went to schools across Wilmington recently, doing skits about preventing bullying and raising awareness, and auditions for the school talent show were held this week.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you, Michaela. So nice to have such happy news and everybody being so involved, that's great. Any questions or comments? Thank you, Michaela, we appreciate you coming. All right, our next item of business, superintendent's report. We have another happy item of business.
I have three items on the agenda. The first one's the most important, and I'd like to invite Robert Sitka to come sit up at the table. In the fall, the town manager notified us that, once again, that the Massachusetts Municipal Association would be holding the annual contest, essay contest, open to all sixth graders across the state, and there were 1,300 students who entered this contest, and the contest had to do with, if they were the leader of the community, what would they do? And I am very pleased and proud to announce that one of my sixth graders, Robert Sitka, won first place and was able to stay over at the Sheridan with his family, and to attend a banquet on the 20th, and able to read his award. In addition, The Beacon, which is the Mass Municipal Association's magazine, just came out, and there's a nice huge write-up on Robert, so...
You have a wonderful suit on here, Robert.
We would like to ask him and to share his essay with all of you, and we wanted to congratulate him, so...
Thank you, Ms. Benton. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Robert Sitka and I'm a sixth grade student at Wilmington Middle School. I'd like to start by thanking Mrs. Benton, but, and the school, Wilmington School Committee, Committee for being, for the honor of being here tonight. I would also like to thank my family and my E.L.A. teacher, Mrs. McGonigal, for their support. And now I would like to, and now I would like to read you my essay that I submitted to the Massachusetts Municipal Association, or the MMA.
Good for you.
If I was elected my community leader, I would make a difference by helping the residents with the hope it would become a better place to live. I would review the major roads and bridges, including checking their structure and make sure they're safe for the residents to drive on. I would repair any roads and bridges needing repairs while doing my best to stay on a town-friendly budget. Safety on our roads and bridges may prevent additional accidents caused by bridge collapse or roads giving way. Secondly, I would make sure we have a strong, well-balanced, and always-ready emergency crew to assist our community in times of crisis. I would review the requests of our community, then talk with the team to hear their ideas. This would allow me to take everybody's thoughts into consideration. Then I would be able to decide what issues to address first that are budget-friendly. I would get to know the emergency crew well and assist them if they needed it, so they can focus on assisting others when needed. I would review the emergency vehicles they use for safety and if they needed to be replaced, I would find vehicles that are safer and cost-effective. I would, finally, I would make sure we have, I would make sure we have a solid foundation for future generations in leadership. I would make sure that we have a system of records that would easily inform future leaderships and generations what we did as a community, including what worked and what didn't. I would make sure we have a system, that, I would make sure we have the system of records safely stored and categorized electronically. I would do my best not to raise taxes, but unfortunately prices continue to rise and so does the need for additional costs. I would do my best to keep costs tight and save money where I could. That is what I would do if I was elected my community leader. Thank you again for this recognition and letting me be a part of this special evening.
Can you tell the school committee, um, what award you won last year? Cause this is the second time he has run, won a writing award.
Well, um, last year when I was in fifth grade at the North Intermediate, um, I wrote an essay on the Massachusetts Fifty-Fourth Volunteer Infantry, which was the only African-American, um, fighting group in the Civil War, um, that, uh, Massachusetts used as their regiment or army. Um, and I came in the top ten out of four hundred last year, so. That's the second year.
Robert, the school committee would love to hear this. In recognition for receiving first place in the MMA essay concert. Congratulations. We're, we're so proud of you.
Thank you.
And your reading was lovely. That was great.
Could you introduce your family that's here before you leave?
Um, well, the one in the black coat is my youngest brother, Thomas, youngest mom. The one next to it is my mom, Barbara, and then the one next to it is my dad, Steven.
Thank you all for coming.
Thank you for coming. It was wonderful.
I was just wondering, um, Robert, do you realize that the town manager is retiring this year and there's a position available?
I'm applying to run for town manager.
You have my vote.
We'll say we knew him when, too.
Budget-friendly. I'm gonna use that next year and like, right, actually, I'm gonna use it in a few minutes in our budget hearing. Thank you. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. I know you have to get up for school tomorrow. Thank you all.
Spoken like a real superintendent. Get your rest. Thank you.
I had two other items on the, um, superintendent's report. The, um, a, a report from the calendar committee that was chaired by Assistant Superintendent Kate Burnham. Uh, the recommendations from the committee and I'm recommending that I bring these forward, um, to the, um, strategic planning committee, which will be starting up again in two weeks to incorporate into that committee, uh, into ma- into that, um, plan. And also, uh, the model system for educator evaluation that the D E S E has put together for your perusal. As you know, we're not a race-the-top school. We do not have to put this into effect until two thousand thirteen. We will need to negotiate with the union. John Dougherty, Superintendent Redding, is, um, one of the, the assistant was one of the early adopters and actually, I asked, um, he's part of the, one of the scene, um, on the scene board and I asked Kathy Lawson, the executive director, if she could organize a workshop for all the scene superintendents and presidents of the unions to hear from John's perspective what they're doing in Redding as a kickoff to, um, as we move forward. So we'll be, um, I've had the president of the associations here tonight. He's hearing that for the first time. I just got off the phone with Kathy earlier about that, but I think it will be a good way for us to, um, start thinking about the process, so.
Excellent. Thank you. All right, moving right along. Oh, oh, and it's just a little after seven thirty. Um, we're going to adjourn into our budget hearing. So, um, I would accept a motion to adjourn from our regular session to our budget hearing for two thousand thirteen, the budget for two thousand thirteen. Does anyone have a motion? Mr. Marquezey.
Um, I make a motion to adjourn our regular session from which we shall return.
Yes.
Uh, to enter the public hearing and the proposed FY, FY two thousand thirteen annual budget.
Thank you. Kate, do we have a second? Okay, Mrs. Carroll, thank you. All right, now.
You want to vote?
Um, yes, thank you. All right, all those in favor? Unanimous, Linda. Thank you. All right, now I'll turn the budget hearing over to Superintendent Benton.
Thank you. I am recommending, um, a, a budget, a operating budget for FY thirteen of thirty-two million, five hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars, which is a three-point-five percent increase over the FY twelve budget. The level of funding recommended for this budget will enable the school department to continue to maintain staffing levels, which will allow the school committee to support advantageous class size at all levels, continue to support our very successful full-day kindergarten program, early intervention at the kindergarten level, continue, continues to offer new and improved business technology department courses at the high school, our virtual classroom at the high school. It will allow us to continue to meet the, uh, standards for providing services to our English-language learner students, which incidentally has increased from eight to twenty-two, uh, E.L.L. students in, in Wilmington, which is really exciting. Continue the technology initiatives, uh, that improves student learning through strong curriculum integr- and instructional programs and continue to support our staff with strong valuable inappropriate professional development opportunities. In addition, this budget requests a point-five guidance counselor at the middle school to deal with the social-emotional issues that our students are facing today. I believe that we need more support at the middle school to, to just delve into that area with our students. Unfortunately, um, our middle school students, some of our middle school students are making some choices that aren't the best choices in, in getting involved with, um, drugs and marijuana. And, um, some of our children are getting involved in, um, inappropriate, uh, Facebook behavior. And we, and some of our children are dealing with personal problems from homes, uh, increase in homeless, uh, number of homeless students, and they need our support. So I'm hoping, uh, for this position to work strictly with that. This position will not be, take the present, uh, population divided in, in thirds. They will just service, um, students through the I, ISS team, um, recommended by the teachers, C and E, or as principal, or a parent, so. In addition, um, we'd like to increase the additional strings instructor position to one point O in order to support our strings program. We have over four hundred and fifty students in the program. Ward Dillmore has done this program on his own for the past five years that I can recall and the program is getting bigger and frankly, we know at some point he is gonna be looking to retire and we really want to have someone on board that can continue the program at the standard that he's, um, uh, brought it to. In addition, um, last year we had asked for halftime literacy coaches at each of the primary schools and we didn't find any, um, good candidates and I think it was because it wasn't full-time position. So we're looking to hire one at each, um, school and we will need an educational assistant at Shawshank for one of the, um, special ed programs. That being said, this budget to me is, um, starting to look at bringing, really bringing the, um, Wilmington Public Schools into the twenty-first century. We have a capital, um, warrant to turn the, um, convert the middle school to wireless so that we can start, um, getting the middle school students, uh, up to snuff with the technology that they will be utilizing in the new high school. We have thirty-one months and two weeks, I think, to get the high school to be ready to open a new high school and we need to provide professional development for the high school staff in order to, um, have a curriculum, uh, ready to go that, um, again, i- is more interdisciplinary, more focused on, uh, critical thinking skills and twenty-first century skills. Now, obviously, we're not turning the high school upside down, but we will be moving gradually and, and I have challenged, um, high school teachers to, to think about interdisciplinary courses. We will be doing workshops this summer. We, we, um, I, we have committees going, um, for the new high school to get, uh, teachers involved in writing curriculum, visiting other schools, and we'll keep you abreast of that. So there are funds in this budget to, um, in order to provide the professional development for it. Lastly, um, if it works out, I'd like to do what college, uh, Brooks Baugh taught me many years ago when I was in Lexington to do, which is addition by subtraction, and that would be to, um, to. Curriculum leader and a, uh, Keter, pre-K to twelve STEM curriculum leader. I, I will not ask, that is just a shifting of funds. I'm not ready to do that yet. I'm waiting to see about retirements and we'll be moving, uh, that forward, recommendation forward later on in the, um, in the year, but that is incorporated in this budget as well. This is an exciting time in the Wilmington Public Schools. Not only are we, um, moving, uh, building a new high school, but we're also thinking about different ways of delivering, um, instruction to all of our students. If you visit our schools today, I, you will see more project-based learning taking place in the classrooms. You will see more students asking the questions. I was at a, um, M.A.S.S. workshop a couple of weeks ago. Ellen November was the keynote. He is, he was here a few years ago and he raised the question, what is the one thing, question you would ask if you visited, when you visited a school, if you wanted to know whether that school was a great school? I'm not gonna put you on the spot and ask you to submit questions. I'll tell you what the question is. Who owns the learning? And if it's not the students, then the school is not an outstanding school. And that's the shift and, and that's what I'm hoping to bring all of our schools to be that way so that the students own the learning. And the teachers are the ones that are, um, soliciting the questions from the students and helping them find out how to find the answers. No longer are we, um, an educational system that is teaching content. The content is easy to find. We need to teach students how to find that content and then how to deliberately, um, sort of dissect that information to, to, to understand what is fact, what is fiction, and, um, how to apply that information, because that's real learning, so, and that's my goal. Who owns the learning? So the budget, um, FY, um, thirteen budget, um, will allow us to provide professional development, provide materials and supplies in the classroom and, um, continue the work that we have started. Also, um, funds to support the, um, new strategic plan. In addition, uh, we, we continue to want to fund destination imagination. That's the kind of program that should be happening in the classrooms during the day and that's one of my goals. My other goal is, is to have more of that happening in the classroom and be part of the curriculum. And lastly, part of that has to do with the tools. And we need to be providing our students with more technology tools so, so that they have different ways of finding information.
Thank you. This public hearing on the proposed FY twenty thirteen annual budget is being conducted in accordance with the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter Seventy-One, Section Thirty-Eight, N. The public hearing has been duly advertised as required by statute. Superintendent Benton has made her presentation and at this time we will have public questions and comments. For school committee members, we will have an opportunity to ask questions and make comments when we get to the FY thirteen budget approval item that's under the old business agenda. So I would ask if there's anyone in the audience and delegations who has any questions about the budget? Okay, um, so I would entertain a motion. Um, thank you. The public hearing on the FY twenty thirteen annual budget is concluded. Is there a motion to reconvene back to the regular meeting? Mr. Marquezey.
So move.
Do we have a second? Mr. Vale.
I have a second, but I have a question too about public hearing and, and, um, twenty, twenty-first century technologies. I know maybe state law is a little bit in the past, but is there a mechanism for, to receive public comment on the budget via email or, or text or something? You know, we're gonna close the public hearing, but people are watching this on television and saw it, they're not here in person.
Uh, not before you vote the budget, but I mean, they could always send, um, send information. The budget's been online for, since, for two months. Um, I have gotten some questions.
Okay.
From the, from the community.
Yeah, I mean, this is our formal opportunity to solicit and hear from the community. You know, we're gonna open and close it. I'm just wondering whether there's a formal mechanism to continue to hear from the community. I mean, I like the fact, obviously, people can always reach out to you or any of us, uh, as well, right?
Definitely. Okay, so we had a motion and we, do we have a second? Second, um, Dr. Quick, okay. Um, all those in favor of reconvening? Unanimous, Linda, thank you. All right, so our next item is to vote the approval of the two thousand thirteen budget. We've gone over this on a number of occasions, um, and so I would entertain a motion to approve as presented the FY two thousand thirteen budget. Dr. Quick.
A motion to vote to approve the FY two thousand thirteen budget as presented.
Do we have a second? Mrs. Bonish, okay. Any comments or questions? Okay, Dr. Quick.
Um, Mrs. Benton, I just have one question. When you were talking about the, um, literacy coaches, you said that you, you thought maybe you couldn't find somebody good because it wasn't a full-time position. Is that because, do you feel that, cause I see that there's one full-time at Woburn and one full-time at Shawshank. Was that something that, did you think about doing?
Last year we had advertised, we split it. It was gonna, it was one position that was gonna be split between two schools and I, and I think that's why we had a hard time finding.
Okay, cause, because it was split. Okay.
So that's why we asked for this.
Thank you.
Mr. Marquezey.
Okay, um, I have a, a couple of questions. Um, in terms of the special ed tuition, um, I, I see on page six that the special ed tuition increased by five forty-three and that the circuit breaker is actually, um, the reimbursement is actually larger than our increase. Is that because we're expecting greater reimbursement from the state this year?
Yes, in the past couple of fiscal years due to the economic climate, the circuit breaker reimbursement rate's been around forty percent. This current fiscal year, FY twelve, it's gone up to sixty-five percent and, and the state's kinda said they're gonna try to keep it at that rate. So the amount of reimbursement we, we will receive in FY twelve is significantly higher than we've received in the past two fiscal years. We tend not to, the money we received this year, we usually offset tuitions the following year and that's what we're proposing to do. So that's why there is such a large increase, as well as some of the reimbursement we receive next year, we've incorporated in this budget as well, that will use some of the funds that we received in FY thirteen to offset some FY thirteen tuition payments as well.
Okay, the reason why I bring it up, because today in the papers, um, the Speaker of the House is not going along with, with the, um, the governor's budget. So that just, uh, makes me very concerned in terms of special ed, uh, tuition and reimbursement, so.
Yeah, the, the money that, the funds that we received this year, what's already earmarked, we've already received half of it. And in March, we'll get a payment and, as well in June. All of those funds are incorporated in the FY thirteen budget. So I will, I was not gonna put any FY twelve tuition payments against that amount of money. We'll use that in FY thirteen. And we just use a small portion of funds from, that we'll receive in FY thirteen that I have incorporated in the FY thirteen budget. We've averaged over the past three years, almost eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars of reimbursements. That's at a forty, forty, and sixty-five percent level. Uh, I'm proposing to use, um, not even half of that amount. So I'm, I'm, I'm fairly confident that we'll get at least that, that amount next, next fiscal year.
Mrs. Benton.
I just want to say that we did receive a, an email from the State House saying that although, uh, there was concerns that, that there was gonna be support for the circuit breaker.
Okay.
Today, so.
All right, well, that's, that's.
Well, that's good news. I mean, it's, hold on to that email.
I know.
Things are going to change quicker.
I know.
Yeah. I have another question. Yeah, I always ask this question in terms of grant funding, and now that, you know, the economy's not in such a great shape anymore, and grants have always gone down, and I know we do have some positions that rely on grant funding. Where do we stand today versus where we were last year in terms of the grant support for certain positions that we have?
Most, some of the positions that were in grants, we have brought into the operating budget because of that, because of the reduction in grants. At this time, the largest number of, the grants are really funding ed assistance in all the schools, so. And we do know that we are getting the IDEA grant back again next year. So we will be able to cover those positions.
That's good, that's good to know. All right, any other questions? All right, all those in favor of approving the FY 2013 budget? Unanimous, Linda. Thank you very much. Okay, and our next item of business, this is our second reading of the financial report, and let me see.
There's a motion to-
There's a motion right here.
Free transfer funds, Mr. Rogiro spoke about at the last meeting.
So I would entertain the motion to allow the Director of Administration and Finance to move budgeted funds from the salary adjustment lane, line, excuse me, to the proper line items to account for lane changes and contractual salary increases. Yes, Mr. Marchese.
Just making a motion, so moved.
Good, thank you. Second? Mr. Vale, thank you. Any questions or comments? All those in favor? Thank you, unanimous, Linda. New business, Electronic Device Policy Pilot Report. Are we going to invite-
I would like to invite Mr. Tracy up to the table, vice chair. Leslie Quick asked me a few weeks ago, about a month ago, if I would ask Principal Tracy to come back with a report on how the pilot program is going. In addition, Chairman Kane had asked for a list of devices that we are using in the high school, so that's part of the, in your packet this evening. So if you could acknowledge Principal Tracy?
Welcome, Mr. Tracy. Thank you for joining us.
I know you've all received, excuse me, received a copy of the report that we submitted for the packet, and generally, the change in the electronics devices policy has been exciting for us. It's been an opportunity for us to try some new things, to get out there and take some risks, and to get kids involved in a different angle of education, if you will. The teachers were asked, you know, who was using what in the classrooms. Many of them were counting on kids' cell phones, smartphones, mini laptops, for the most part, that are on portable carts. So that's generally what they're using now as devices within the classroom. You know, the majority of the reports that we received from 21 teachers responded to my request, and that were actually using devices, trying devices. And it ranged from a really, really great positive experience to one where people felt like they needed to work on it a little bit more because of the technologies, the newness, you know, signals, things like that, that were related. But generally, that they've had, have done some interesting things, including note-taking, photographing things, posting to web logs, being able to read and access information online, using Dropbox as an online file exchange for entire classrooms, to put everything in kind of in one place and have it be in the cloud, if you will. Poetry reading, communication during projects with team members in the business department, using Quizlet to give mini quizzes right away in classes and get your answers back fairly quickly. Voice recording, looking at online textbook versions that we have, flashcards, you name it. Kids are trying different things, and 99% of them have been completely free for us to access online and available, either through laptops or cell phones. In some cases, we have nooks in the library that have internet access as well. So it's been, it's been a pretty good experience for us as a pilot. There are some things that we do want to look at. We want to look at a better, working harder at educating kids about the etiquette pieces of when, where, why, and how with any device, not just cell phones. And everyone seems to hone in on that, but this is an electronic devices policy where kids have gaming devices, portable gaming devices, that can do just as much as some of these other e-readers and things that are available. So it's more of trying to help kids understand, you know, appropriate times, responses, and appropriate uses, because given opportunities, kids will try anything they can, you know, make work on their device. But certainly, we've had some feedback from teachers, and they've had to talk to kids about, you know, when we're doing X, you need to stay focused on that. And it's not a huge percentage of kids, but it's more of, I think, a conversation that we need to have with our kids when they come into the high school, and probably before. I really think it has to happen at the lower levels. Kids are accessing technology at such a young age now. You know, I'm talking to second and third graders who have a smartphone in their pocket, which, you know, I have yet to figure out, but it's one of those dynamics that happens in the real world. So we're trying to take advantage of it. We have learned a few lessons along the way that we want to incorporate into our future conversations as we develop committees for the new school, and also courses, you know, starting to kind of change our courses and look at hybridizing some of our courses, because many of the things that we're doing within our courses can be accessed individually or in groups, online, away from the teacher, while still being connected to the teacher. So that's a long-term conversation we need to have over time about course hybrid and possibilities there. And certainly want to be able to, you know, kind of lead the way and get our kids and our teachers involved in as many avenues as possible, delivering a high-quality education, especially as we move into the new building with even more opportunity for the wireless access and the integration almost on a full scale, so. Any questions?
My mind is really-
I have a couple of questions. First thing I noticed in the, in this report was, it says here, the paragraph, no pages, "Teachers report that students will need to be better educated about electronic etiquette" like you've mentioned. "Teachers report an increase of cell use in the hallways in class, yet cellphone violations have essentially diminished to zero at the administrative level." Can you explain that?
Yeah, it's an interesting dynamic, where I think people look at it from the perspective of they're doing it, and they're not going to, you know, make a huge issue out of it. In nine out of 10 cases, when you go to a student and say, hey, you got to put that away, it's gone. And the kids have been very respectful in that, in that perspective, if you will, from, you know, coming out of the cafeteria, walking down the hall, and say, hey, guys, you got to put that stuff away. You know, they, we haven't had issues, because I think they appreciate it more at the times that they can use it. And even the conversations we've had with kids to say, you know, you're walking down the hall, and you're texting right in front of everybody, it's, you know, you're not supposed, you're only supposed to do it here and here with permission. And they get it, and, you know, we don't have the arguments that we, we've had arguments with kids about, you know, I'm doing it, you can't tell me I'm texting my mother, whatever. And we don't seem to have that level that we've had before. Teachers have, you know, reported, saying to kids, I, you know, ask students not to do this in my class. If I catch them, I give them a warning, and that's, you know, usually the end of it. So it hasn't become the battle that it used to be. And I think there's people, people a lot less vigilant about it as a rule, you know, and more of, you know, what's going on, trying to monitor what's going on.
Because I just want to interject for one second, only because, you know, when I, when I voted on this, I was really on the fence about it. I was really hesitant, because I know just as much as anybody else does, you know, how kids, like you said, kids will, you know, try to sneak it away. My concern is, is, you know, like you said, in the classes where, my concern is, I guess where, especially where it says, you know, where kids are taking quizzes on their cell phones or these types of things, where they also have access to the internet, how easy would it be, I mean, I would assume it would be pretty easy for them to, and I'm not saying that all these kids are doing this, but it would be an easy option to look it up during a quiz. I mean, are they finding there's increased cheating, things like that with this?
That's a good question, because I asked the same thing. The teachers that have used this Quizlet, it's really short. It's really, it's a small, quick quiz. Okay, you've got three minutes to answer these four questions. And, you know, they're usually quick, multiple choice, and they're not writing an essay or anything like that. And it's really something that you want kids to give you some instant feedback, so that you get a good idea of where you're going, and if you're going in the right direction, or if your kids really get it. So it's just not designed to be a long-term, you know, a 20-question quiz. You could, but I don't think anybody's used it to that extent.
Could I interject you right there? When you're talking about that Quizlet, which one of these, you gave me a list of the different techniques, equipment that you would use. What do they need to take that Quizlet on? Is that an iPod, an iPad, and what is it?
Any of them.
So everybody in that class, they know that everybody in that class has one of something that we haven't provided, that they've provided themselves.
It could be, it could be, it could be mini laptops. We have mini laptop carts, 24-station laptop carts that can go from room to room. So it could be those as well.
Okay. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
No, I just wanted to make one more comment. I think, you know, as far as teaching the kids the etiquette, I mean, I just want to make sure these students understand that, you know, this is a privilege and not a right. So I think that's just something we really need to hit home to them. Thank you, that's it.
Excuse me, Mr. Marchese.
Just something that you touched upon, Mrs. Kane, in terms of saying what we provide the kids. I think where this is going, I think what we need to look at in the future is actually providing the devices to the kids, similar to what Burlington and Tewksbury are now doing, and actually providing iPads to the entire school, so that everybody has, they're on an equal basis, and we're all using the same technology at the same time. I think that's something we should look forward to.
Where are you going to get the money?
There's plenty of grants. I mean, Tewksbury, they're finding the money out there from underneath the rocks, so. But I think it's just something that we really should start looking towards. It's something that I would support going forward, so.
I would love to support that, but we'd probably have to cut 20 teachers in order to, I mean, I know the numbers. I've already looked at it. We don't have the funds to support a one-to-one for the entire high school. I think we could do a combination, and I would encourage, as we move forward, to think about that combination, because Burlington is not going to continue one-to-one providing them. Their goal is for students to be bringing their own. They're doing this now so that they can all learn how to use it. But I don't think we will ever be able to, I don't want to promise the community something that we can't deliver.
No, I'm not saying we're promising, I'm just saying I think it's something we should look forward to. Then you're obviously going to have the savings of textbooks, you know, books you're not going to need anymore, versus you, you can just look something from Shakespeare in your iPad, instead of having a whole book that you're spending $100 for. So just-
But I don't have a $5 million grant from Microsystems that's to supply the computers. That's how Burlington is doing it. It's not through, it's because they have such a large business base, and they have a grant from the old Microsystems that used to be in Burlington. That's how they are funding these laptops, so it's not coming out of the operating budget. Believe me, I would love to do it tomorrow.
So would Mr. Tracy.
Look for a grant. Find us a grant, Mr. Tracy.
That'd be great. Do we have any more questions or comments?
Can I just say something about the etiquette? Because it was brought up, and actually, I'm going to surprise you all, it's not about student etiquette, it's about parent etiquette. We're running into a real, people are concerned about cell phones in schools with students. I need to talk about a bigger issue, and that's parents writing comments on Facebook about things that are not happening in the schools, but leading the community to believe there are things happening in the schools. And I would really ask this community to, before they put something on Facebook about what happened in one of the schools during the day, they call, call central office, call me, call the principal, and find out if it really happened, instead of starting these rumors that just keep being repeated on Facebook, and there is no truth to them. So I really would ask the community to help support us on that, to talk about etiquette of use of Facebook. Thank you. It was a perfect opportunity to bring it up, because I had to deal with that this week. Thank you.
Thank you. That is an issue. I think that's why I go back to, I'm getting better, I'm getting more open-minded, I'll tell you, but-
Wait a minute, didn't I just tell you grandson has a Kindle, or is doing dating online?
Dating, what the top? An older woman was after him on his Kindle.
This gave his mother a heart attack.
I know. But you know what? Two things. One is that in the past, like even we as school committee members, we would get phone calls, and now sometimes, things are happening over the internet. And if, and our appropriate protocol is to say, we're sorry if that's happened, and you need to contact A, B, and C throughout the school system. But it's no different than, in a sense, if we had gotten a phone call saying, this thing happened, and we would then say, well, thank you, we're sorry, but you need to call this person next, and follow the protocol. So that made me rethink a little bit about this whole electronic devices issue. We just have to learn even ourselves, how do we stay apart from it, or how do we get involved in it, you know, what's appropriate? And so that brings me to my second point, and my second point, my second point is, do we, I want to get in front of this. I've felt that we've been behind this, that we say, okay, open up the doors, let any electronic device you want into the high school, and let them work with that. But to me, we have a whole list of electronic devices you could have. I would feel more comfortable, I'll feel more comfortable when we actually have a course on etiquette, or a night where we have people come and talk about the etiquette, or talk about how they're being used, and have maybe a teacher committee, a little teacher committee on how we'll actually use them in the classrooms. Because partly piggybacking on what Mr. Marchese said, I really am horrified to think that we might start doing this, and then expect parents to have to buy $200 machines, or $300 machines, so that they can keep up, their kids can keep up with the other kids. That's what I worry about, that that's, so we're in a way behind. We're not ahead of them by not supplying them ourselves, and I understand why we can't supply them ourselves. So I just think, I don't know whether it's our technology committee that meets, or, but certainly, and for the teachers that you're involved in, you've opened it up, which is wonderful, and you know some teachers are never going to do it, some teachers are going to do it partway, some teachers are going to do it full force. And that's, that's life, that's what happens. But I think that for us, this is the first time I've been nervous about something, and I know I totally trust the superintendent and her leadership, but on the other hand, to me, this is such a different ballgame, and I need to keep, if I'm feeling this way, and I'm involved in it, I think other people might feel this way a little bit, too, a little nervous about it. So have you had any, but I think I asked this question, and you haven't had any reaction from parents?
None.
It's, which amazes me, how come I'm reacting?
I can see that, because I get reaction all the time.
They're not coming to us.
They're not coming to us, yeah.
Yes, Mrs. Benton.
Two things. One, when we go to one-to-one, there will be plenty of community involvement in parent education as well as student education. Burlington, I mean, they did three nights of training for parents and students. There are also contracts that students and parents have to sign, and if they break the contract, they lose the iPad. So, I mean, whatever we end up deciding, we are behind in technology. I mean, we are not ahead of the game. But I'm okay with that, because it's changing every day, and the prices are going down, and we can actually learn from these school systems that are doing it this year. Because this is really the first year that you see in any public schools taking it on in such a large way. And there are still areas and questions. As far as the safety, and Wilmington T- IT director, as far as closing down locations, blocking access to lots and lots of locations. Burlington is totally open. I'm not ready to go there yet. It's going to take us a couple of years to get there, because there has to be a lot of training and education before that happens. The other thing I just wanted to say is, last fall, or summer, when this all came up, and we started talking about that, you asked me to do a survey, and I did put a question in there, if you'll recall, that said that if Wilmington moves to one-to-one computing, would you be willing to supply a laptop or device for your child? 67% said yes.
Wow.
Which is larger than I ever thought would be.
I know you told us that before.
So, well, I'm going to remind you again, because, you know, just in conversation tonight in this room, I heard about children owning- tonight in this room, I heard about children owning phones, Kindles, NOOCs, that's the same price. It's going to be the same price for that. So children in Wilmington have those, those two tools. We would never do anything that would not allow all children access. So if we got, even now, teachers don't use a cellphone, electronic device. If three students in the class don't have technology, they would be given a laptop. We only use it if all children have access. I just want to make that clear. Thanks, Mr. Tracy.
Thank you, Mr. Tracy. Do you want to add anything else or we're all set?
No, I'll sit.
All right, great. Any, anybody else we all set?
Thanks.
This is an interesting new, it's an interesting new place to go.
Yeah.
So, yeah, thank you very much. All right. And our last item of business is the superintendent's evaluation. Okay. I gave you some information and the evaluation contract language I put on the sheet so that we'd all be on the same, you know, wavelength on that. And said that we would discuss it at this meeting. We know because of the new state laws, everything needs to be discussed in public and so this discussion, we have not had any discussion about this and this is our first time we're discussing it. I gave you the superintendent evaluation instrument that we have used in the past, relationship with the school committee, educational leadership, general management, personnel management, communications, and public relations. And we also, if you add those to, I added the superintendent goals, that brings 11 items that we could possibly do an evaluation on. I think that's a lot personally, but what I want to get a feeling for how everybody else feels. And do we have to cover all 11 items? If not, which ones should we use? And the other thing is the superintendent's goals. It's my belief that because these are the goals for the year, these are what the evaluation would be based on in addition to the relationship to the school committee. But these items are identified here with some actual information to give you an idea of where you would make those decisions. Then tonight, just before I was coming, I was online and all of a sudden, the people in the Mass Association of School Committees are starting to blog about superintendent evaluations. Completely, so I gave you the two sheets that I got off the Internet tonight. And one of them, it's the superintendent evaluation tool. And I only gave this to you for, not for what's printed on here, but for the, to show you, which I really like. Rather than having to put meet expectations, exceeds expectations, et cetera, whatever, this one has commendations and recommendations. So that if you had commendations in this area of committee superintendent relations, you would write those down. If you had recommendations for something that might be more helpful for you as a school committee member or, or not, or just things that going, you know, work really well as things are. To me, that might be easier for all of us to use those as the comments. And I gave you the last page because in this particular, and this is ones from Arlington, they have a summary page where they put all the commendations, all the recommendations, and summary comments. So I just wanted to see if we could have come to some sort of agreement. I know it's so difficult to do it this way, but I don't know what, what you feel. And Mrs. Benton has to agree that this is, when, when we decide on this, Mrs. Benton has to agree to it, to what we do. So, does anyone have any comments? Mr. Marchesi?
From what you, you've given us, I, I think it's kind of overkill, especially in the last page, it's commendations, recommendations, summary comments. It's, it's kind of overkill in what you already go through. In terms of what we did last year, which the five, five general topics that we had, excuse me, six, one, two, three, four, five, six, I, I kind of like that format and then just take the superintendent's goals and, and see where she's at. What I would, what I would like to see is actually, is have the superintendent go through the goals and kind of update us on where she, where she's at in all of the goals and then take her progress and then use that into the six items that we always base it on and create our comments off of that. That's what I would like to see.
That's what I did here. Yes, that's why we did this that way. Yep.
I, I think that would be more useful to get an update on her goals and then go back to our, our six general categories. And I think that would, would simplify the process instead of thinking of, you know, 12 different categories.
This, okay.
Page three.
It's on page three, but it has page two. Wait a minute.
Yeah, it's, it's the last two pages of our original packet, the relationship with the school committee-
Oh, right here.
-educational leadership, general management, financial business, personal management, communication, public relations.
Previous to this, Mrs. Benton had taken those in that page two right here. She's incorporated them right in there, in that list.
It's the third page in your packet.
On the third page. So under relationship with the school committee, climate and culture, she took, one of her first goal was, yeah, do we get, yes, can you explain?
If you look at the third page, do you all have that superintendent evaluation instrument? I took the six, the five goals from last year and then I embedded into them the, I mean, the five topics from last year and I embedded my goals, main topic goals into the categories that they belong. And I agree with you, Mr. Marchesi, what I would then do is give you an update on where I am with the goals and then you would write me in each of these categories.
Yep.
I think we're saying the same thing.
I think so too.
Yeah, I agree. Yeah, that's exactly what I'd like to see, it's exactly like that. Yep. Yeah, the only thing that I think you're missing is on your page three is financial business operations or did you mingle that with something else?
General management.
Yeah, financial. I put it into general management.
Oh, I see. Oh, you put it into general management. Okay, I get you. You mingle the two.
Yeah, I tried to put, yes.
Yep, okay, that's fine, that's fine.
So that covers, that covers everything. What do we think about that?
Yeah. And then we can base our comments off of that, off of what she provides to us.
And now the comments, what I personally like, rather than trying to nitpick, meet, exceed, et cetera, I personally like this commendations and recommendations. I don't know how the rest of you feel about that.
My gut says I certainly like the idea of recommendations, not that I can think of any, but that would inform presumably the development of goals that we would come up with for next year, right? Which I kind of, I like the iterative nature of that.
Right. And we have to remember that we're doing this because of the, because of our election coming in April. We have to do this like three months prior to Mrs. Benton being able to finish her goals for this year. So we have to keep that in mind as we do this, to which we did last year, we did a good job on that, I think. Yes, Dr. Quick?
I mean, I like, I think the idea of the commendations, recommendations is good, but it doesn't, I mean, recommendations could be anything. Recommendations could be anything that we might want to add or, or something.
Right.
It doesn't really take into consideration and, and again, you know, you know, probably it's all going to be all commendations, but I'm just saying that there should be a section for, you know, something that we feel that there needs to be in some, if you have that opportunity.
Right.
If there needs to be, yes, if there's an area where we think there needs to be improvement. I don't feel like recommendations really-
Covers that?
Covers that. I could be wrong, but-
How do other people feel about that?
You want to add a critique?
Well, I'm just saying, you know, I mean, I'm just saying it's, it's, recommendation just doesn't necessarily mean somebody's not performing up to standard.
Or PhD defense or something like that, right?
I think, see, I disagree in a way because I think recommendations is so, it's open for us to-
Go for interpretation.
Interpretation as far as-
Yeah, I think that sends you down the path, you know, you may not want to go down. You know, we're, we may recommend something the superintendent may look at as like, you know, we have two heads and say, "Why are you recommending that when this is our strategic plan? This is what, this is what we've been doing." So, I mean, I, I'm more in line with, with general comments and, you know, and just commenting on her performance and, you know, instead of trying to narrow it down to, here's my recommendation, here's my commendation, and here's my general summary.
Then are you saying perhaps we should just put summary comments instead of commendations or recommendations?
Yeah, yes, I'd be more in line with that.
Yeah.
Yeah. Did that go smoothly?
Just as an FYI, this is next year, you will have to-
Redo.
Get to redo it again because the state's coming out with a new one-
New one.
-for superintendents as well as principals and teachers.
And everybody wishes they could skip a year. Why don't they let us just skip a year? But it's a state law, we have to do this, so, you know, it seems ridiculous, they're still working on this, but anyway. All right, so we'll put summary comments, we'll use this second page here, we'll have the superintendent give us an update of her goals. So I will work on putting this together and getting it out to you so that you can do this. And the question is, do we, we, oh, we need to look at probably our next meeting, we, February vacation is our, would be our next meeting, so we historically do not meet during February vacation. We're supposed to go on March, I mean, February 29th would then be the next meeting. However, on March 1st, the next day, we're supposed to go to the finance committee. So I suggest that we use that as our meeting, our February, March meeting. And we present our budget to the finance committee that night so we're not out two nights in a row like that. And then on March 14th would be when we meet again. But I'm thinking, just to make sure that we do this right, we should have March 14th for us to come back and just check on, we'll put this on the agenda as all business, but to check and make sure we have the form correct and we have the information that the superintendent want to give to us. And then we actually do the evaluation on March-
28th.
28th. How, how do we feel about that?
Does, Ms. Benton, does that give you enough time to go through, through it all?
Or April.
I know you're busy with other stuff right now, so.
No, that, that works.
Or we could do April.
Yeah, as long as we-
The first week in April.
Well, I'll let you know.
As long as we do it before the elections.
Yeah, how about March 14th? You can tell us whether you'd rather it March 28th or April.
Yeah.
Yeah. That's good. Yes, thank you.
Winter town elections?
April 28th, is it?
Yeah, last Saturday in April.
End of April.
Yeah, so we have the two, we have two meetings in April. We would still have two meetings in April, so just want to make sure. But I thought last year, it just, I left it till too late and it was too rushed. So I think we need to be fair to everybody and have it as, you know, as tough as we can be. All right. Any other questions about that? We all set?
Yeah, that's the, just the, the April, it's, it, school committee would be the 11th and the 25th and the 25th is vacation week, so.
Oh, yeah.
I, I think this is better to try and get it done in March.
Okay. That sounds good, so March 28th, sounds good. All right. Delegations, do you have any other delegations tonight? Thank you. Other reports, subcommittee reports? Let me see, correspondence.